Did you want to do the pledge?
Oh, yes, I apologize. I'm getting down to business here. If everyone would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the nation and to the state from which it stands, to beautiful peninsula united by a bridge of steel, where equal opportunity and justice to all is our ideal.
Now, Sandy, if we can have the roll call.
Certainly. Councilmember Malama?
Yes.
Sheppers?
Here.
Stevens?
Spohman?
Here.
Mayor Philkins?
Here.
What does that mean? Okay, now we have the approval of the agenda. Marcus, can you help me with the things that we are going to change on the agenda this evening?
Yes, Mayor, members of the City Council. I would like to add an item A under the City Manager's Report with respect to adding a Budget Work Session. I also would like to add a closed session immediately following our grid of the order to, one, consider an attorney-client privileged written legal opinion, and, two, to consult with the city attorney regarding trial or settlement strategy in connection with the city of Cadillac via Mitchell Lake Corp., Wexford County Circuit Court, case number 14-25602, for the reason that an open meeting would have a detrimental financial effect on the litigating or settlement position of the city.
Okay, can we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of the Budget Work Session under City Manager's Report and the closed session at the end of the meeting. Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call?
Councilmember Sheppers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Malama?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes.
Motion carries. At this time, we'll open the floor for our first public comment. If you would like to come forward, if you would come to the podium and state your name and your address, as well as write it down for Sandy. She appreciates that.
Hello, my name is Jaleena Theobald. I live in 926 Sunburg Street. I'm here to hopefully get permission to put up different food banks around Cadillac, kind of like little cupboards everywhere. And people that have, they leave the food; people that don't have, come and take the food. I know there's a need for it because my family has been in the position where we needed the food and didn't have it. I've also worked at different food banks to help donate the food to those in need, so I know that Cadillac needs this. So I'd really like to do it, and I'm willing to put in the effort to get it to happen.
Thank you.
If you wouldn't mind just leaving some good contact information?
Yes, of course.
Thank you.
I live at 124-and-a-half Fair Street. I was asked to come tonight on behalf of a couple of older people that live in my neighborhood. The one gentleman just had surgery on Friday, so he couldn't be here, but he's quite concerned. I know that we all know it's a big issue with the water problem. He went four weeks without water. They came, they supposedly fixed it, got him running. Two days later, they start bursting mains on Moyer Street, which, you know, everybody's aware of. But he's quite concerned now that they're telling him there's a broken pipe. He still has no water, and it's under his driveway. Very old man, fixed income, doesn't know how he's going to pay for it. Now they're finding that possibly the city is having a problem with the mains being frozen and wonder if the city's going to step up and do anything to help any of these people in that neighborhood, because it's going to be quite a burden on, you know, people with the fixed income. And I know there's some other folks here that live over in the general area, and like, I'll let Rosie talk, but she's been without water for six weeks until like Sunday, so...
My name is Rosetta Cowley, and I live at 1135 Manning Street. And I've been without water for six weeks. And last Sunday, on the 29th of March, I looked out my bay window, and my whole street was cracked from this side, the curve in front of my house across the street, and the water just pouring out of the road. And that's when a whole bunch of people from the city come over and put new pipes in the ground, and I had to pay out of my own pocket, which I can't afford. I'm a widow with Social Security. And on Tuesday, or Monday, after they got done in the road, I turned my faucet on in the kitchen, and my water froze while it was running. I run my water a week before the city give notice. And I turned it on, and Tuesday morning, my water come on after they put new pipes in. And I don't feel the $400-plus I had to pay to get somebody try to thaw me out. I don't think I should have to pay that. I think the city should reverse me and all the my neighbors who lived on the same street as I do. I had to let some of my heat bill go just to pay for this water situation, which I don't feel is my fault. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close public comment at this time. Okay, we'll leave it open at this time.
Yeah, my name's Gordon Jeswick, and I live at 13480 Hemmer Road, Tustin, but I own property in Cadillac. And I've had problems at 211 Weber Street, frozen up twice, had it thawed out. Five days later, three faucets running, still froze up. So the contractor said, "Well, I'm going to run a garden hose from your spigot outside, and we'll turn it on just about full force. I guarantee you, it won't freeze up this time." And it hasn't, but we're going to have, naturally, a huge water bill. And then I've got another problem on 920 Lester Street, and that's a dead-end street that goes into this house I owned, and he's been frozen up for probably a month, but he's had poor water pressure for years. It's a rental house. And what needs to be done there, of course, is the whole line on Lester to his house needs to be dug up and new line put in. He said he's never had water pressure like he does now because we're running it from the neighbor with a garden hose over to his house and connecting, and he said, "Wow, I can't believe the water pressure." And so that's just the second situation I'm trying to tend to now. He still doesn't have water, but he's getting it from a neighbor, so... The main concern is 211 Weber Street because I was froze up once last year, got a big bill, over $1,000. Now two freeze-ups this winter, one within five days of one another. And you can go to the area and see all Weber where they've been digging. So what I think needs to be done is somebody to dig up the main and take a look at it because why am I freezing up at my address and everybody to the north, no problem? But it's at 211, right where it connects. They thawed out, and, you know, everything's okay, to a point where I put the garden hose in, or Frankie did, and that solved the problem, but we've got water running through that hose like you can't imagine. This pencil lead theory does not hold up. That's maybe years ago, but it's got to be at least the size of a regular ballpoint pen. It's got to be more than just a pencil. Pencil lead doesn't get it, or I wouldn't have frozen up a second time. So basically, that's all I've got to say, but it's a real serious problem, as you're well aware of. But I think we're at a point in time here where we're going to have to take a look at these areas and do something about it.
Thank you.
Instead of just saying, "Well, it's been a cold winter," and all this, you know, we've all heard that, but that doesn't solve the problem.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll close public comment. And the next thing on the agenda is the consent agenda. And this evening, we have the minutes from our regular meeting that was held on March 16th, along with the closed session, which was held on March 16th, and then the minutes from the work session, which was also held on March 16th.
It's not that. Phantom dinging.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Sandy, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Sheppers?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, and then this evening, we have a couple of proclamations. And the first one is a proclamation declaring April as Month of the Young Child. Do we have someone here to present that to? Okay, I'll just go ahead and read it. Whereas young children are the future of our community, and whereas 1/3 of children entering kindergarten in Michigan lack some of the skills needed for success, and whereas success in school is highly predictive of success in adult life, and whereas young children and their families depend on high-quality programs that provide for their care and education, and whereas the city of Cadillac wishes to join with the Wexford-Missaki-area Great Start Collaborative and its member agencies in the celebration of April as the Month of the Young Child. Now therefore be it proclaimed that April 2015 is declared Month of the Young Child. In the city of Cadillac and all citizens are invited to duly note this occasion. And the second proclamation that we have this evening is to declare April as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Do we have anyone here to accept that one? Okay. If you want to come up? And you are?
Angela Cook, water.
Hi, Angela, it's nice to meet you. Okay, this is the proclamation declaring April 2015 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month is intended to draw attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and impacts every community, and whereas 1 in 6 women have been the victim of a sexual assault in their lifetime, and whereas 2/3 of all victims know their assailant, and whereas 61 instances of sexual assault were reported in Wexford County in 2013, and it is believed that approximately 68% of all sexual assaults are not reported to the police, and whereas sexual violence can deeply and enduringly impact survivors on psychological, emotional, physical, and social levels, and whereas Oasis/FRC provided resources to over 250 victims in the last year, and whereas the city of Cadillac supports the work of Oasis, the Family Resource Center, to end sexual violence in our community. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Carla J. Philkins, Mayor of the city of Cadillac and on behalf of the City Council, declare April 2015 a Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the city of Cadillac, resolved this sixth day of April 2015. Thank you so much. You're welcome. Thank you. Okay, we did have a community spotlight, and we're going to move past that one for this evening. We'll schedule that later. But we do have some communications?
Yes, we have a request from Gary Koster from Friends of Wexford MSU Extension to display a banner from April 27th to May 4th, 2015, celebrating 100 years of MSU Extension.
Mayor and Council, I'd like to ask if I may be recused from this discussion and vote since I am an administrative employee of MSU Extension.
Absolutely. Do we need to vote on that?
Yes.
Do I make a motion? I'll make a motion to recuse Councilmember Spohman from this discussion and vote due to her involvement with MSU Extension.
Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Sheppers?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Need a motion for approval.
Oh, okay. For the banner?
For the banner.
Oh, I am so confused. Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the display of a banner from April 27th, 2015, to May 4th, 2015, celebrating 100 years of MSU Extension.
Support.
Sandy, could we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Malama?
Yes.
Sheppers?
Yes.
Stevens? Mayor Philkins?
Yes.
Motion carries. Did we have anybody from the MSU Extension here besides Sherry? Okay. I just wanted to acknowledge you if you were here, so, okay. Sorry, Sandy.
Next, we have a request from Steve Birdwell from the Cadillac Honor Guard to approve the parade route for the Memorial Day Parade to be held on May 25th, 2015.
Okay, and I see that Steve Birdwell is here. Would you like to come up?
Just a couple of quick words to start. Our parade, we do every year, and our service at the stadium and everything, we asked permission, or how do I go about permission, for this year if we could close down the city parking lot? We have problems every year, people trying to park in there, and they get mad because we pull a fire truck in beside them, and they ain't got a place to go, and we can't move fire trucks around. I just want to know for 8 o'clock on that morning if we can shut down Elk Alley and shut down the city parking lot, and we have everybody all lined up and ready to go. We had a couple of arguments last year on it, and I'd like to eliminate that. Other than that, the parade route's the same. We're going to do the same with the salute to the sailors down at the dock, normal parade route up to the stadium, and then our services.
If I may, the request you just made, that wasn't part of the original seminal, Mr. Birdwell?
No, it wasn't. It's just something I've discussed with a few people, and we have a committee that has decided.
If I may make a suggestion to the City Council, an authorization of the event, of the closures, rather, to give staff the latitude of perhaps closing down other portions of other areas as needed to best suit the event. We would obviously want to meet with Mr. Birdwell, you know, Public Safety, discuss the logistics. Couldn't tell you tonight whether that would work out, but if we approved the parade route and then Council also authorizes staff to make other closures as necessary. We've done it in the past for other large events. We could do that in this case and work with the group accordingly.
Do you want to change that time from 8:30 a.m. to 8:00 a.m.?
8:30 is the staging area. I'd just like to have it started to close down at 8 o'clock.
And that would be something that we could do.
We have five people on a committee now. We don't leave it up to the 3andMore veterans of the DAV now. We just, we have a parade committee from the Honor Guard with all these people involved.
Good idea.
And we just, we started that last year.
Okay, wait, someone make that motion? I'll try. I'll make a motion to approve the parade route for the Memorial Day Parade to be held on May 25th, 2015, from 10 a.m. to 11 a.m., with the staging to begin at 8:30 a.m., and to authorize city staff to make other closures as needed. Good. And do we have support? Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Sheppers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, then we move into appointments this evening?
Yes, it's being recommended to approve the reappointment of Jim Blackburn to the Civil Service Commission for a six-year term to expire on April 6, 2021. It is important to note, we did receive an application today from Mr. Rubio for this position, which we will keep on file for future opportunities.
It was too late to add him to the agenda or to put his nomination in?
Because I had heard that. I've been gone for a while, and I've been back a week, and I had heard that another person did apply, so that's why I'm asking.
When did we receive the application?
It came in snail mail today.
Yeah, it would be important to let, I mean, we keep talking about we need volunteers, we need volunteers, so it would be important for us to reach out to him and let him know what else we have available to get all of those spots filled up, and if he's interested in volunteering, that would be great.
We, as a statement, and I know I can't make the statement because it affected closed session, but there was some discussion on that civil service nomination, and I cannot make that statement, but I do feel I do want to raise that point, and I do recall that discussion.
I'm sorry, I don't understand what you just said.
What I said is that in closed session, it was last April, we made some decisions in closed session, and I, obviously, I cannot discuss what those decisions were or what those statements were in closed session because we're in open session. And I just want to make that part of the record, that we did have some discussion on that last April.
If I may add, and again, it's obviously we're in open session, and so we wouldn't talk about any specifics, but discussions in closed session would have been discussions and not decisions. The decisions would have been made, even if made without much detail, back in an open session. And I don't know if Laura wanted to...
So why do we have closed sessions, then?
To deliver attorney-privileged legal opinions to discuss funding litigation. There are various reasons one can go into closed session, but the decisions, such as accepting an attorney recommendation, are made in open session.
Yes, I understand that, but I'm questioning closed session. Purpose.
I don't know which closed session you're talking about.
I know, you weren't there, so...
But she answered the question about what is a closed session for.
She answered it, and she gave me a legal opinion, and I have a different opinion, but that's fine.
Okay, so the recommendation that I made was to reappoint Jim Blackburn to the Civil Service Commission for a six-year term to expire on April 6, 2021.
I'll make that motion. Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
No.
Malama?
No.
Sheppers?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes.
Motion carries. And then we move to the manager's report, City Manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. The first item is the new A would like to request setting up a Budget Work Session at 4:30 p.m. on April 20th, which is your next regularly scheduled meeting date. It's on Monday.
I'll make a motion to schedule a Budget Work Session April 20th at 4:30. Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Malama?
Yes.
Sheppers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. This next item is an exciting new program that we're looking at moving forward with titled Storybook Walk. I'm sorry, did I skip one?
Yeah, you did it backwards, but that's okay.
Closed session.
No. No, that's right. You're okay.
I'm okay, okay. Am I all right?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so, okay. Thank you. This next item is the Storybook Walk program. Josh Pello from Mitchell State Park is here this evening and has brought forward this concept, this idea. In the packet, there's a visual, a picture of what we're looking at approving. Josh, did you want to mention a little bit about the program and the partnership with the library?
Yeah. What this is, is this would be a partnership with the library, the city, as well as the DNR, and on the newly established North Boulevard Trail that was opened last year in ribbon cutting in October, between Kenwood Park and the Carlton Johnson Hunting and Fishing Center, the library is going to seek grant funding to create a Storybook Walk. And so on the north side of the trail, there would be approximately 12 stations with two pages per books, and so a family could park at Kenwood Park, walk to the visitor center, and read a book as they go, and then there'd be 12 returning, split separately, so you wouldn't be backed up together, and then also be a separate book following you from the visitor center back to Kenwood Park, which would also create another story for you to read while you're walking on the newly established path.
It's 24 signs in total?
24 signs total, very similar to what we're looking at, something like this right here. I think it's in a packet.
And, you know, this is, I guess I'll say it in a way that the city really is sort of coming out smelling like a rose. The DNR and the library are really moving this project forward. They're going to be responsible for the installation, for future maintenance. Our approval is certainly necessary, and I guess, seriously, this is the type of project we'd love to partner with, you know? It really is a great win for the community as a whole and for guests and visitors to our area.
This is something that a lot of other state parks are being looked at for having these, but as far as I know that if approved and... having these, but as far as I know that if approved and if we were to, you know, install them by summer, it would be the first one in, out of 102 Michigan State Parks.
And let me just say, this is the coolest idea ever.
I wish I came up with it and I, it's a great idea, yes. It's a really neat idea.
Are you excited to join Andrea at the visitors bureau?
I have a meeting with her on Monday.
Okay. That would be great to get that information.
So was it the friends of the library that approached you on it?
It was Tracy Logan from the, from the library is the one who approached the DNR on it.
Love it. Love it.
So what's the timeframe?
Timeframe is they, the library has requested the grant funding and then once that gets approved and with permission, we would purchase them and install them hopefully before, you know, the busiest season of this year.
Nice. That's great.
Great. I'll make a motion to approve the placement of the storybook signs as presented.
Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Malama?
Yes.
Mayor Felkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. The next item is to set a public hearing for April 20th as a part of our regular city council meeting with respect to the 2015-16 annual operating budget.
I'll make that motion.
Could we have a support?
Support.
Sandy, roll call, please.
Councilmember Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Felkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is to set another public hearing, again during the regular meeting of April 20th, with respect to the five-year capital improvement program. And that would be the 2016 through 2020 CIP.
I'll make a motion to set a public hearing for April 20th, 2015, to discuss the 2015-2016 annual operating budget. No, I lied. To consider approval of the 2016 to 2020 five-year capital improvement program. See, I should put along three S's.
Could we have support?
Support.
Sandy, roll call, please.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Mayor Felkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. This next item is with respect to the Seventh Street Improvement Project. As a quick reminder, this project was brought forward to us by our local area industry, specifically Avon Protection went forward with enhancements to their facility, thereby qualifying the city for the ability of receiving an MDOT transportation enhancement grant that could be used in the specific geographic area in which their plant is located. And working with Avon Protection and other area industries, we were successful in getting the area industries to actually pitch in the dollars necessary for the local grant match amount, which is just a tremendous sign of support from our industry and something that I believe made me the first ever to have happened, which is really, really fortunate. So the project is able to move forward really with complete outside funding. We did issue a request for, for proposals. We received two, one from Reith Riley, one from Elmer's. The recommendation is to go with Reith Riley Construction, an amount of $145,911.80. Also, there is a printout of the map showing the area. Bruce, if you could maybe use yours and just kind of walk through very quickly what, if anything we should be looking at on this map?
Well, it's Seventh Street located, located totally on what you're seeing in front of you from the railroad tracks basically to Fifth Avenue and a little bit of intersection work at Eighth Street and Fourth Avenue. It's more or less just milling up the existing surface and putting down a new surface and doing a few minor repairs under the road and some curb repairs and stuff like that. But it, it's planned for June 22nd to start and hopefully by June 29th we'll be done. So it's a quick job, spending a lot of money in a one-week time, but hopefully that's the best schedule for the industry out there and that's why we picked it.
I'll make a motion to award the bid for the Seventh Street project to Reith Riley Construction in the amount of $145,911.80. Support.
Sandy, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Mayor Felkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. This next item is with respect to emergency purchase that the city had to make in between our council meetings. Unfortunately, our one and only hot patch trailer was involved in a vehicle accident where oncoming traffic illegally crossed the center line and crashed into the hot, the hot patch, which basically is a, is a big oven that holds asphalt used for patching puddles. Fortunately, the person that crashed into it was not horribly seriously injured and also very fortunately, our employees that were in the pickup truck at the time that was towing the hot patch maker were also free from injury. That being said, the hot patch trailer itself was not, this is, if you will, an emergency action or spending report, there is no action for council to take. But we did solicit some quotations, including the company that we originally bought the machine from and got another quote as well. We did use Falcon, the company that we originally got the machine from, to buy a new machine from for an amount of $15,000. The other quote that we got was from a company called K&amp;M, which came in almost at $28,000. And so we, we do feel comfortable with the purchase of the new machine from the prior vendor that we had already gotten quotes from when it was originally bid out.
Did they take the old one back?
I believe the old one, we're going to look at getting repaired, is that correct?
There is actually an option. It would have been about half the cost of a brand-new one to get it into working order and it would have delayed them being able to utilize it for several weeks. So since it's prime patching season, that's why the decision was made. The other one's already been deployed, used, filling holes out there. For about $2,600, we could get it repaired to a point where we could use it as a good solid backup, but not a primary patch trailer. So it looks like we'll be able to, that's the direction that our street superintendent has recommended and it looks like we're going to go ahead and do that.
I didn't know how much damage was done.
Yeah, it was going to be about 50% of the cost of a brand-new one and this was a six-year-old piece of equipment already. So that was to get it usable as the primary frontline patch trailer. So we are going to be able to, it looks like, get it repaired for about $2,600 and have it available as a good backup.
Why is this considered prime patching time?
Thaw, lots of holes.
And when you almost lose your dental work, you're getting these big holes.
Tire rods break.
Prime patching time is my term, not necessarily the street department's, but they, they were just deploying it. I mean, it was, it was on its way out to be used to fill potholes, so.
I can see why you wanted to do it and you bought it, but I, I really am questioning why it was an emergency decision that was made.
You know, and we can always look back and have a conversation on it. The concern again was the size of the holes that are out there, trying to stop the damage in some of the, the real big areas where they're turning into more than just sort of manageable annoyances and only having one unit. You know, as soon as that snow breaks and it's gone, the snowpack that, if you will, previously filled up any, any of these holes that formed during, during the winter are now, are now out there, can cause accidents, can cause, you know, additional issues that we, that you want to try to prevent.
I like that explanation of preventing it, a hole from getting larger and you do that by patching it.
Yeah, at the end of the day, it was a judgment call, you know, I mean, there's, nobody's, no life and limb was threatened by any means, but certainly to lay it by weeks.
The original one is going to be used as a backup, but how often could you actually put two of them out on the road at the same time? Would you?
I don't know.
We'd do it probably this time of year, 50% of the time, maybe.
I think that perhaps one of the things to remember is, it was mentioned that to really fix it, it would cost about half as much as the new unit, but we're looking at band-aiding it, putting a couple thousand into it to use it as sort of a backup. Maybe it's, Bruce, our fellow works, I could just say, as a, as a way of getting another unit out there some of the time, but if we push it too hard, it's probably going to, going to break.
So did you mention that the insurance covered that?
They covered a portion of it, yeah. It was on our, it was on our statement of values for our insurance at kind of a depreciated cost, so it's not going to be the whole, I mean, really, it's going to be about three grand is all.
So you're looking at putting two of them out there then?
Potentially, yeah. This would allow us to, you know, the one would be primary, obviously, and the other one would be repaired to a point where, at least for part of the season, we could get two crews out.
I do look at this as a timely thing.
Yeah.
And the other thing is, is as we get, the temperature changes, as the water goes in those holes and freezes, it gets larger and larger and then with the car tires hitting it and plus the condition of our roads, which is no fault of ours, we just haven't had the funds, I, I think this is probably a wise move.
Okay.
Okay. The next item is with respect to the repair of our 2006 International Snowplow, International Truck. This truck is, believe it or not, our newest vehicle in the snowplow fleet and it is a 2006 vehicle. Essentially, the engine blew up on it. The cost of, of a new, basically a new truck is, we believe, around $83,000 for a new chassis. The situation that we're dealing with right now is, in order to fully understand what happened and what could be repaired, they had to start taking the engine apart and right now the engine is completely taken apart and we are locked in with Cadillac Truck to put it back together. There is a fix to it. The fix is $14,341.52. As you can see within the, within the communication, it states how the head gaskets are blown, catastrophic internal failure with several of the cylinders. And so the vehicle will be, when it's put back together and the engine is put back together, essentially as new of an engine as possible. It's not covered under warranty. We did try going through International to see if there was any way that they would help us out there and much to our chagrin, they, they would not. We are asking city council to waive bid. We would likely be having to pay a fee somewhat similar back to Cadillac Truck just to put it back together to begin with. It makes sense for us to look at waiving the bid and moving forward with them, do the repairs while it's putting the engine back together. Bruce, if there's anything more to add?
That's pretty much it.
I'll make a motion to waive competitive bidding for the repair of the 2006 snowplow. Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Felkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to award the contract for the repair of the 2006 International Plow to Cadillac Truck Service in the amount of $14,341.52. Support.
Could you roll call?
Councilmember Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Mayor Felkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. This next item is an emergency action update, somewhat similar to the report that was given with respect to the purchase, the emergency purchase of a patch trailer. We are dealing with the aftermath of a catastrophic event over the course, essentially of a couple of days, two and a half, three days, with several main breaks in our city. Jeff Deaton, our utilities director, has put together a slideshow, you do have copies of that here as well. We, at this point in time, do still not know the total cost impact of this event, but Jeff, if you could walk us through the slides, that'd be great. And again, we wanted to make sure that we brief council.
Hello, council, mayor. As Marcus said, we had some actions come up since our last meeting here. I guess spring has arrived because the mains have broken in Cadillac. We're not the only community in northern Michigan. I just read something from Friday's Traverse City paper where they had $87,000 worth of damage so far and I know there's some other communities out there. So we had some main breaks. It started on March 28th of this year and it went to March 30th. In a three-day stretch, we had one, two, like six to seven breaks along four different roads. So Sandy, this is the first sign of a main break. You got water there, you got something bubbling up. We had the call on Saturday, on the 28th. Dave Sterns, my, one of my supervisors was on call, he went out there and looked at it and lo and behold, we had a main break over on Manning Street. Next, I don't know if you can tell in, on the photo, but right there, there's a crack along the side of this pipe. In your, in your handout, you can see a nice little crack there. The areas, Manning, Weber, Moyer, Sundberg, these areas were older construction when they used to use cast iron pipe in the ground. They put cast in the ground and when they, cast gets cold, it, the, when ice forms in it, it'll actually split the pipe. And, and that's what happened in those areas. Since that time, we no longer use cast. That was used until, I think, the early 70s. Since the 70s, they've used ductile iron and that has the strength to make it through the winter. Next, Sandy? Another pipe here, you can see the nice line right here where we had a nice crack in there. Those cracks, they formed during the winter, you know, who knows why the ice was in there, if it was not enough water in the area used, if it was just that cold that even the water used wasn't enough, you know. Our, you know, we believe that there just wasn't enough water being drawn out of the pipes at the time to keep them from freezing. You have one house freeze up, it stops using water. You have another house freeze up, it stops using water. Pretty soon, nobody on the street is using water, that main pipe freezes. You know, it freezes because there's not the water being drawn out of the, out of the pipe anymore. So next, Sandy? You can see here, this is a solid chunk of ice right in the middle there and you can see along the edge here, it's open. So that's what happened was this, these ice plugs, the ice in the pipe was actually keeping the water from coming out of the cracks that they had formed. Then it started to melt and water was running on the outside here and then the water would find those cracks and start boiling up through the, through the dirt and through the frost and up through the pavement and just tear up a street. Next, Sandy? This is my, one of my chief operators and his hand here is a chunk of ice that came right out of a four-inch main. So I mean, it's solid ice in some of these areas. Next, Sandy? This is Moyer's, no, this is Manning Street. You can see this is a corner of Weber and Manning and they're digging this up and replacing this. We had a break on the, actually on the corner and then we had a break pretty much where this excavator is. We decided at that time to dig up the hole. We decided at that time to dig up the whole main. From that, it's about two-hundred foot, we did not find one piece of pipe that was not cracked. So, this whole length, every piece of pipe was cracked down there. So, we usually, and we're currently doing this on Weber Street, the first initial break you have out here, you'll just repair, and you hope that the pipe in between, because a lot of times, cast will survive, and you hope that there, none of this in between is broke. But then, when you have a secondary crack, you say, well, now it's time to just replace from point A to point B in. And this one was one of those, and we had about two-hundred foot of a broken cast main. Next, Sandy? This is another shot down Manning, where the guys are replacing, digging up and replacing mains. Next, a cost. This is a big one right here. Let me get to mine, I don't want to misquote this. Michigan Pipe and Valve, our supplier of ductile iron pipe and fittings and that, we had thirty-one thousand, seven hundred, sixty-one dollars and sixty cents worth of pipe that we had trucked in, fittings we had brought in, fittings we used that we had on hand that we had to replace. So, that's, you know, just a cost straight out of our pocket. Thirty thousand dollars in asphalt. We do not have the asphalt yet, the plants aren't open. This is taking last year's bid price with the quantity we have, and that's, that's out there for us, is another thirty thousand dollars on asphalt. LC Ready Mix gravel to fill in the holes, we had one thousand, six hundred and eighty-two dollars of gravel. Frankie's was the contractor we used on this, on these projects, on these breaks, and so far, we've had twelve thousand dollars worth of, of cost for Frankie's.
And Jeff, just to clarify with respect to Frankie's, we did use Frankie's, as he mentioned, to help us out, especially with the excavation, the large, I would call it bulldozer, not bulldozer.
Excavator.
Excavator, thank you. That was out there, that was Frankie's equipment. So, when it came to opening up the street and creating that huge trench, that was done by a contractor. When it came to, you know...
Laying the pipe, we actually laid the pipe ourselves.
In the trench, that was our, those were our folks.
And we don't have equipment that big to do that job. We have, for small repairs, for spot repairs, we have equipment, but some laying pipe, we've always, well, not always, but we historically have bid that out. Next one, utility overtime down here. This is just overtime, not the amount of time we worked there. Five thousand, seven hundred dollars worth of overtime. DPW labor, they helped us with their, their labor and some equipment to move the gravel and that. That was another three thousand and seventy-eight dollars. And then, I think, the rebate on the pipe, that's kind of neat, that, all that pipe, we took all the ground, it does have a value. We took it over to Padnos, and they wrote us a check for twenty-two hundred dollars for broken pipe. So, there is some offset there. So, the grand total so far is eighty-two thousand, twenty-seven dollars and nine cents that we, that we've accounted for so far. Now, there might be more breaks that happen this spring, there might, the asphalt price might vary, but there is some of that cost there. Next, Sandy? Some additional information, you know, we'd like to thank Frankie's for coming in. We usually use a different contractor, he was unavailable. Frankie stepped in for us and did an excellent job for us. Utilities Department, we had three supervisors that came in. We only have one supervisor on call, and the other two just came in of their own volition to help out. It was a huge, huge problem.
That was all on a weekend, right?
That was all on a weekend. We had the whole crew come in, minus one. The minus one was in Hawaii, where I do believe he would have responded. So, we had the whole crew come in and work hours on hours to get water out there, you know? Hey! I accepted that excuse that you're in Hawaii, you know? And I just want to say, I am, I'm so proud of my crew, I'm so proud of my division out there, to get out there, for the whole crew to come in, to work in the conditions they were working in, to work, you know, ten, twelve, fourteen-hour days, some of these guys to get out there to, to try to restore water to as many people, come back multiple days, you know? And this isn't, again, this is over, the figure we have is overtime, there, that doesn't account for my equipment costs, that doesn't account for my regular time costs that the guys had. I'm going to pay that anyways. I'm just projecting what is above and beyond my normal budget there. So, I mean, my crew did a phenomenal job, you know, we've, I've talked to the former superintendent, former, two formers ago, Director of Utilities, Don Rennie. He never had, since sixty-three to when he retired in ninety-three, they never had to run water. Larry Campbell had one in nineteen ninety-four, a run water, citywide run water, and we've had two in the last two years, you know? So, that's a long time since sixty-three to two thousand and fifteen, to only have three, one water, citywide run water. It seems like it's a huge problem now, it seems like, you know, maybe we should do something with the water pipes, maybe we should do something with this or that, you know? It has been extremely cold, you know? You look at the history, you look at how many times we have done run waters, it isn't very often, so.
Jeff, can you, when you're talking about the run waters and about, you know, the frozen private service lines, could you maybe just briefly explain to City Council how, as a part of this restoration process of the mains?
Yep.
What we've done?
Well, what we've done on the mains that have frozen, any laterals that we came across, we thawed, whether they were thawed, whether they were, those laterals are privately owned, well, the city owns a chunk of the lateral and then the homeowners. We restored water to every person that we ran across. The lady that was from Manning, eleven thirty-five Manning, I do believe her water service comes off Weber. We were not on Weber at that position, so we didn't thaw that one. But everyone on Manning that we ran across, we thawed. Everyone that we were on Moyer, we thawed. Everyone that we were on Sundberg, we thawed. So, when we were out there and we were thawing the main, we were also thawing those laterals to restore water. When a main freezes, you know, and this is a, we had this over on Sunset. We had a main freeze, we had six, seven houses out of water, and we had ran hoses from house to house. Well, the fix to thaw main is to shut the main down and steam it open. When you shut the main down, the houses that have water now freeze. And so, and if you don't have valves that can operate in that area because they're frozen, you got to go farther out. So, now, instead of you have, you know, half a block frozen, you have four blocks frozen. So, the solution is, you know, wait to spring. It's a, it's a bad solution, but you don't want to put those other people out of water either, if you have running water.
What is the status on Sunset?
It is now open and running. There, nobody has hoses, everything is up and running. Again, that was duck...
Thawed on its own?
It thawed on its own, that was ductile iron, newer, you know, and that's the difference between ductile and cast. If ductile's going to have a problem, it'll actually separate at the, what they call bell and socket, where the pipes go together, it'll actually separate apart, that way, not the pipe itself breaking, so. And so, we have watered everybody out there, the, all, we had two fire hydrants that were frozen that are now back in service because of they thawed.
So, how, how much ductile do we, or cast do we still have out there?
You know, that's a good question, you know? As we replace streets, we replace the ductile, you know, and it was used up until the seventies. So, you know, some of these streets we haven't been on because the roads are good yet, and you don't want to go down and just change it. And again, ninety-four, two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen, those are the freeze years, you know? Nothing before, you know, since sixties, early sixties till then, there's three years that froze that we had to citywide run water. Obviously, it was bad enough that we thought stuff would freeze, so I wouldn't, we could go out and make it a priority to replace all the cast. I think there's better uses for our money, you know, sewers or, or the bad pipes that are creating water quality problems for people, rather than just chase after something just because it's old.
So, Jeff, the lady that was here earlier, Mrs. Cowley, I think was her name?
Mm-hmm.
And Gordon Jezwick.
Mm-hmm.
You know, he talked about the, the private subcontractor that he had, telling him to hook up hoses over here, there, and everywhere. Wouldn't that cause problems? I mean, it'll fix his problem, but...
Well, if you hook up...
Not really, but it'll fix his immediate problem, but if they're bypassing the system, will it cause it?
No. What, what they're doing is, and we recommend it during freezes when we have a problem, we did it on Sunset. You take the person that has water, they feed it through the next house, they feed it through the next house. You have a hose laying on top of the snow, the end house that has the last in the line, they have to run a faucet full bore all the time, or that garden hose will freeze up, you know?
I wasn't talking about the garden hose, I was talking about the actual pipes themselves, if they just stop running, trying to run water through there.
Oh, yeah, that would...
Does it make the situation worse?
If people stop running water, yeah, obviously, then, an area does not have the water drawn through there, and then that water sits in the main and it will freeze.
Yeah, what's weird about the garden hose, I was thinking about what was on the ground.
Yep, and once it freezes, again, it doesn't stop freezing because it froze at this point. It freezes both direction along the water, until it gets into an area that's deeper, you know? Mr. Jezwick there, he, he said he had water froze, they thawed it, he had water again, they thawed it, he had water, I'm assuming, again, because then he said they ran a garden hose out. So, that main out there never froze, it was obviously something with the lateral coming into the house, and that's why they ran the garden hose out. The Manning, the lady from Manning, that, I think she's coming off of Weber, and that was, you know, frozen main. I mean, that, I do believe that one was frozen out there, but we never dug up that main to see. It hasn't broke, so we haven't dug it up, and she's got water back now, so.
Is that the lady that was without water for six, six weeks?
Mm-hmm.
She does have water now?
Well, she said that tonight, I thought.
Yeah, she says she has water, but she's...
Okay, yeah, I thought she said that.
Six weeks is a long time.
Right. And again, our, you know, we have people in the area running water, so do you shut them off so then their water freezes up or not? You know, it's a, it's a judgment call on our end, but we're trying to keep as many people in water as possible, you know, and to thaw these lines, it's just really hard. Now, the, the ones on Moyer Street, the new services we put in, we put insulation on the services, we did a lot of stuff to, hopefully, we lowered Moyer a foot when we were putting in, so we lowered it a foot, a foot and a half deeper. It was kind of strange on the thirteenth street end of it, it was probably where we started, it was probably about three foot deep. When you got to the Weber Street air, end that we did, we were probably about ten foot deep, just naturally. So, that pipe was just, I don't know why it was going so slow, shallow on the one end, obviously, you know, it was installed way before I was here, so I don't know why they installed it that way, but that, we just lowered, again, a foot and a half, two foot. So, where we could lower pipe, we lowered pipe, where we could insulate pipe, when we have the road dug up, we insulate it. We did what we could to hopefully not have this problem again.
So, where do you put the gravel?
What do you mean? In the hole. You, you, when you, when you, when you, when you dig, you, you take, you take the asphalt off, you know, and then you got to separate that, and then you dig the dirt, you separate that, and then when you backfill, or you put that, when you're done doing your work, you put that dirt back in, while you still have a layer of gravel that's missing, or a layer of asphalt that's missing. So, we're putting the gravel in there because there's no asphalt plants going right now, and...
My question was going to be, so what causes them to freeze? Isn't, I mean, of course, the temperature, the air temperature is a factor, but it's the depth of the frost?
It's the depth of the frost, and, you know, over the winter, that frost will be driven deeper. You know, you think about it, if you have a well or you have a pipe in your yard that comes from the city, city water supply, it gets off the street, it runs across your yard, it comes into your house, you have snow on top of that, you have no traffic over it. We, the city, we plow the streets, we take all that insulation off. We have cars run over that, that just drives the cold deeper in the ground. Where do we put the pipes in the middle of the street? You know, we put them down five, six, seven, eight feet, but sometimes, you know, I heard the frost was nine foot deep over at the Michigan Department of Transportation Measuring Station, it was nine foot deep. So, you know, I'm sure some of our streets, frost is only a couple feet deep because there's not a lot of traffic on those streets. I'm sure some of them, it's quite deep, and it's that cold being driven into the ground that causes it, so.
But you made an interesting statement there. You really didn't have the problem until the last two years. It's always difficult to look in the crystal ball, and I hate using the word climate change because when I was in Florida, the governor issued a statement that no state employee could use that word, but I'll use it here. Is there a plan, or do you have any thought on if this happens again, what action we can take as a city, or what we can do? Maybe other cities are brainstorming on this issue?
You know, really...
That we need to be prepared and not say, oh, jeez, it happened again.
Well, really, the, the big, you know, our big defense is people running the water, and I know everybody runs their water, and everybody freezes that are running their water, and some people do. I probably had about sixty, sixty people that came in just swearing they're running their water, and we've done meter reads over the months. I've found two that actually have higher use than before the, the run water, out of sixty, and I'm not exaggerating. It is, we're taught since kids, turn that faucet off, and I think, even though we're running it, we're running it so slow, and, and this year, one of the people said, you know, that pencil lead thing, that's, you know, bulk, bulk, you know, whatever. We, on purpose, this year, put one gallon every fifteen minutes. This will be about this size. Last year was, it's a pencil lead size, this year, it was one gallon every fifteen minutes. Next year, it's not going to even have that, it's just going to be gallon every fifteen minutes. People aren't measuring their water, they're not measuring how fast it's coming out, and they're not using what they think they're using. I did it last year, I was in my office, and I set up our faucet, and I said, that's about it. I was at a gallon every forty-five minutes. Because I just, you know, you think it's the right one, you need to put that measuring cup under there, and you need to measure it, it's a gallon every fifteen minutes. And if you run it twice as hard as I say, you know, a gallon every seven minutes, that's going to increase, because I'm still going to pay, I told everybody I'll pay on my portion, that will increase your bill eighteen dollars. So, for sixty dollars for the freeze season, that's pretty cheap insurance to run it just a little bit extra hard. Again, twice as hard as what I said. You know, but I think we're, what's pounded in us from when we were a little kid, shut that faucet off, you know, my kids...
It's not just that, it's just have it.
Yeah, it is, it is.
Think about it.
Yep, and I have to...
All of a sudden, you're like, ah!
We've had people this winter that, we had a lady, she, you know, she came in, she said, I shut off my water and it froze, and we're like, why'd you shut off? Well, I had it running, I made a pot of coffee, got the kraft out, filled it up, shut off the water, poured it in, did whatever, came back when the coffee was ready, so ten minutes later, said, oh, my gosh, got to turn on that faucet, she was froze already.
That's what, having a slash.
Yeah, and that, that quick, so.
Are there not lining technologies that are out there? I know that there is for the sewer, and I'm not sure...
Lining water mains?
Yeah, I know you do it in sewer, I'm not sure about water.
You can do it in water, but I don't know what the, what efficiencies we'd gain from that, you know, as in insulation factors or anything like that? So, you can do it?
Is there a way, Jeff, to identify areas within the city that, you know, people don't run their water because you're only going to pay eighteen dollars, and they're afraid they're going to run sixty dollars' worth of water, and they can't afford that? Is there a way for you to identify areas within the city that is just absolutely important that that water is running, that you can subsidize more of that cost? If you know, there is just, like, what happened out there, if you know that there is going to be problems, is there a way that the city can subsidize that more?
I think when you look at what happened over here, and then you look at Sunset Lane, who would have thought Sunset Lane would have froze? You know, I mean, that's, that's a big eight-inch main going down a street where there's a lot of use, a lot of people, and it does, I was thinking over, and this, I have brought this up to my people, we loop our system, so water can come from any end to come down a street, you know, both ends. I was talking to my guys, said, you know, over in the, the Moyer, Manning, Weber area, is there a way that we could turn valves so it's not looped, so it's just one continuous stream that goes through that whole area? So, then, everybody's use would be coming through that one stream of pipe rather than coming from all different directions. And I don't know, you know, we're looking at stuff like that, I don't know if there will ever be a way we can do that, where we can just have... will ever be a way we can do that, where we can just have, you know, maybe a winter time operations, summertime operations, but something, you know, that was pretty bad out there this year, so.
You know, or if, an area, if we start having multiple problems in one area, you know, let people know, you gotta let it run at a greater rate, and subsidize more in that area.
You know, the, the trouble is Traverse City had this trouble, then you overload the wastewater treatment plant. You know, if you're running it, if you're running the water, I mean, we have the plant, but, and, and we don't have the membrane filters that they have, but, you know, it's not only the water, and the water's actually quite cheap for me to provide to people, it's the sewer treatment, that sewer that go into that plant, that, you know, you got a gallon of water, it's water, you got a gallon of water and a tablespoon of sewer, it's a gallon of sewer. And I have to make that sewer water clean to go out to the river. So every, you know, there's that fine line between keeping the pipes from freezing, both water and sewer, and overloading the wastewater plant, so.
The unfortunate reality is, even if money really was of no issue, and we could move forward with the replacement of the older transmission mains with ductile, that still won't prevent the main from freezing. The main can still freeze if there isn't enough pressure or water being used.
Yep.
Folks will still, you know, not have water services. The, the primary difference is the likelihood of the main itself completely breaking, like what's essentially happened here, goes down.
Yeah, correct.
There's still a likelihood that it will separate at various joint locations that would still require excavation, and people coming in with essentially patches-
Right.
-to put in place. But when you're looking at that overall capital cost, you know, the, to the end user, whether they're going to have their water or not, that isn't necessarily going to resolve that, you know, the, the only way to resolve that is to just keep your water running, and, and hard enough, and I say that generically, however hard that has to be, to prevent, to prevent it from freezing.
Right. Well, I just, I just think that, you know, we need to, I ask that question because I think that we need to help people understand that, you know, we don't have the answer to it, but we certainly don't want them to walk away with a great big bill. And so if, and if we could identify just an area of the city that, you know, is obviously having problems, and do something a little different in that area of the city, perhaps it will help.
It could, and I, you know, I think this year, we actually were, we timed it better than last year. I think last year, maybe we were too close to when people were freezing, this year, we were definitely a week, two weeks out before we had that, you know, we did-
But didn't we have more problems this year?
We had, it was colder this year, we had the coldest February ever.
Yeah, it was also-
You know, so, but-
The cold temperatures were in December, before the cold was down.
So I think we-
Real cold is later in the winter.
I think we timed it right, it just was a colder winter, and I think we, you know, it was just a, you know, second cold winter in a row, so.
So, Jeff-
Any other questions?
Go ahead, Jeff.
I just had one more question, in looking at your crystal ball of weather and climate change.
You gotta get this right.
In the next few weeks, when do you think we're going to be able to stop running water?
Good question. I, I would say the third week of April, we'll be telling people to stop running their wa, they can stop running their water, we'll send out a letter in the third week. I would, you know, with the warm weather, with the pipes breaking now, I, you know, I hate to say now, because I know there's still people freezing, but I would think in two weeks, you know, one or two weeks from now, I'll be sending out a letter saying-
That'll be for the letter.
Wait, that's your indication, is the letter?
Exactly.
And, and I would say, you know, definitely, probably the third week, you'll be getting a letter, and that say you can shut it off. We'll probably put the first of May down, but once you get that letter, if you got the letter, we're, we're pretty confident at that point to shut your water off, so.
Jeff, I did want to add that I thought it was really great, at the end of your presentation tonight, that you took the time to thank your staff, and to point out that, if you look at the top of our agenda this evening, at our guiding behavior that Sandy put up there, we support each other in serving our community, and that's exactly what your department did last weekend.
And that-
Thank you for taking the time to, to notice them and to acknowledge that.
I'm telling you, we have a good crew out there, that really works hard, so I, I just, a lot of times, we hear about other departments and utilities, though we provide a service, we're kind of, you know, we don't squeak, we don't, you know, knock on wood, don't have many problems, and, and we just don't toot our own horn. So I just want to toot that horn, that they did a great job, and I'm proud to have them, so, thank you.
You did a great job, too.
Nah, I just let them work.
Okay. All right, the next thing we have on our agenda this evening is introduction of ordinances and resolutions.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. This is bad timing.
We're all feeling so bad.
Given the, yeah, speaking of water, exactly, this is bad timing, truthfully, given the debrief council just got on the emergency action that took place earlier in the week. But this item is a request to set a public hearing for April 20th, 2015, regarding a water and sewer rate adjustment of three percent. There'll be a presentation at that meeting accordingly, but just as a quick recap from the conversation earlier this, this afternoon during our work session, the city has not had any adjustment to its water and sewer rates over the last three years. So this would be the first one in three years. Prior rate increases were over four percent, so this is lower than the last increase that we did have. We are working on essentially some significant repairs to our metering system, there's over 4,000 meters that we have, that are about 10 years old, that's certainly an expensive cost, and the general expense of, of continuing to keep the infrastructure operating, both water and sewer, continues to, to be of an expense to the city, which obviously, we need to make sure that we're, that we're covering through rates. That operation is not subsidized by property taxes, so that's another, just tidbit I wanted to, to toss out as well. So again, this evening, we're looking at setting the public hearing for April 20th, 2015.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution to introduce ordinance to amend section 42-374 of chapter 42 of the city code to increase sewer rates for the city of Cadillac by three percent, and set a public hearing for April 20th.
Support. Sandy, could you do the roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Malama?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
The next item is for the water rates, same, holds true.
Okay. So then, I will make a motion to adopt a resolution to introduce an ordinance to amend section 42-201 and 42-2023 of chapter 42 of the city code to increase water rates in the city of Cadillac three percent, and to set a public hearing for April 20th, 2015.
Support. Sandy, could we have a roll call?
Councilmember Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Malama?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
The next item is with respect to industrial facilities tax exemption certificate that's been requested by Metal Punch. They have incurred costs of $249,344.49. They are asking for this abatement with respect to their Amada Meister G3 High Precision CNC Forming Grinder with Fanuc 32i-B Control and Tour. I really cannot explain what that is, other than it's an integral piece of machinery for their business. This will assist with the retention of three full-time positions, and I know that our finance director has mentioned this to me about four times, because I keep asking the question. But this went into effect 2014, the improvement?
The improvement that they made here is part of the, yeah, you can't approve it later than six months from when it was, when it was put in, so within the last six months, but prior to the end of 2014, otherwise, there really wouldn't be a need to, to do it based on the reform to the personal property tax law, because it is personal, personal property.
And therein lies the next piece, which we're all still somewhat a little foggy about, but with respect to the reform of the industrial personal property tax, this abatement essentially comes offline about a year from now, is that right?
Well, anything purchased after 2013 would automatically go off the tax roll for next year. The rest of the stuff kind of phases out, unless it was bought, I think before 2005 or '06, but, yeah, because of the way that the reform is, is scheduled to, to come off your tax roll, they would, they would get, they're going to get taxed this year, but they'll get then the 50% abatement.
Right. And then, and then after this year, it's not entirely as we understand.
Right.
So this evening, we're asking for the setting of a public hearing regarding this item for April 20th.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution to set a public hearing for April 20th to consider requests from Metal Punch for an IFT certificate in the amount of $249,344.49. Support.
Sandy, could we have the roll call, please?
Um, I got a-
Okay.
...bleep in here. Is it possible that Oscar or Larry could be in attendance and give us a little understanding of this new piece of equipment, and the impact it will have on Metal Punch?
We can invite them.
All right.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, and then this evening in our packets, we have the minutes of the Dog Park Advisory Committee meeting that was held on February 11th, 2015, along with the minutes of the Downtown Development Authority meeting, held on February 25th, 2015, and the minutes of the Cadillac Wexford Airport Authority held on March 19th, 2015. At this time, we'll go ahead and open the floor for our second public comment this evening, if someone would like to come forward, if you would just limit your comments to three minutes.
Can I just ask Jeff questions?
Sure, if you'll come up to the podium and tell us who you are.
I just had some questions about the water. Kathy Foster Chapin Street? Do you think the water problem is because people don't run water when they're told to run water?
I, I do not see the increase in the water usage like I would expect. I would expect to see three to 400,000 gallons a day increase usage over the average.
So they're not doing it?
No, there's a huge portion that is not.
Okay. How about, is that snowbirds, is that what we call people that go away for the winter? Their houses are vacated.
Correct.
If my neighbor's doing that, okay, is that affecting me in any way, or my main or anything? I mean, because you know they don't turn it on when they leave, I assume, I don't know.
I'm watching my neighbor's house and running the water.
You're turning it on, I'm just wondering, because I think we have a lot of people that do that, that leave, which is, you know-
We have 4,000 accounts in town approximately. I'd say, you know, probably, we get requested for turnoffs on maybe, oh, 150 accounts every year, and those are the snowbirds that are leaving, I mean-
So they literally turn it off at your end?
They turn it off because they don't want a broken line in their house.
They know enough to do that, okay.
So, you know, a lot of this, so, you know, 150 people out of 3,000, or 4,000, I don't see that affect. Now, if there was a bunch in one block, it certainly could, but over the whole city, no.
Well, I just kind of look at the fact, and I've always stated this, people don't live in the city anymore, there's a lot of renters in the city of Cadillac, and usually when you rent, you either pay the water or you don't. If you're renting, and you don't want to pay the water, you know you're not going to pay the piping, you're not going to pay for the repair, you might want to look at that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Good questions.
Yeah, okay. Yeah.
Okay, seeing no one else, we'll go ahead and close a public comment, and move to good of the order for this evening. And this evening, we'll start with Councilmember Malama.
One, been away a little bit, I have been watching council meetings on, online, so I'm not completely out of the loop. I'm catching up on some things that have gone on. I have been in communications with the council on a couple of issues that I'll probably take up in the next couple of meetings. But anyway, we left in the snow, and we came back in the snow, so I don't think I've missed much. But anyway, like to point out a couple of things. On 14th, next week, Tuesday, our CAMA group will be visiting the old jail, and taking a tour, which we call it Scared Straight, and we'll be having the same lunch the inmates do, so we'll have a real experience. Then in addition to that, we'll get a briefing on the new proposed jail, and be able to answer and ask some questions, so I expect that to be a excellent meeting. Also, in May, I want to encourage employers out there to contact the Career Tech Center, we have our Career Expo going on. Our manufacturing base will be out there, there will be retailing, there will be BNR, there will be, the hospital will be there, just about every business that affects the programming out there at the Career Tech Center will be in attendance, and this will be our third year, and it's been extremely successful. In fact, the Michigan Manufacturers Association has sent out information to other associations on what we're doing, and it's been very, very helpful. It's kind of like putting an old head on young shoulders with young people, so that they know what's out there and how to approach a job. Also, on 4/15, that would be the following Wednesday, we'll be doing our coffee, and it will be at Clam Lake Brewery. So hope to see many of you again, plus our standbys. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Spohman?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to the Water Department for their hard work, and to Jeff for his leadership in that. It's been an interesting winter for everybody, and, and my heart does go out to the people who have been without water. It's really tough, and I think, as a community, we have to continue to have this dialogue, and listen to each other, and listen to what people's concerns are, and maybe be, you know, able to look at some alternative solutions as we move forward with this. Who knows, maybe these last two years were just flukes, and we'll never have to face this again, but if they're not, I, you know, we have to get creative on what our solution is, especially for people who really can't afford that. Last year, I was without water for two weeks, and it was, that was really tough, being without water, and, and then I can't imagine if I, you know, had to worry about whether I was going to pay the plumber to fix it, or to pay my heat bill, what that would be like. So that, that just adds something on top of that, that I didn't have to deal with. I mean, I didn't like having to pay that $400, but I could afford it. And then I wanted to make an announcement that U.S. Congressman John Mulanar is going to be in Cadillac tomorrow, and one of the stops he's planning on making is at 10 o'clock at the Wexford County Lake Street Building, if any- planning on making is at 10 o'clock at the Wexford County Lake Street Building, if anyone's interested in attending that. It's being sponsored by the Wexford County Farm Bureau. And most of the focus on that is going to be agriculture and natural resources, but you're certainly welcome to attend. That's at 10:30 at the Lake Street Building.
Thank you. Councilmember Shippers?
Got it.
I should say, it's a meet and greet. It's not just a presentation from him. So everybody's welcome to just get to know him and have him get to know our community better.
Okay. Since the last time we've met, the youth council has had a regular meeting and a work session. And during the regular meeting, they had a presentation from Joy Van Dri, and from Lieutenant Galnick set up, someone could come in from TNT. They have to address their concerns. And then, during our work session, they came up with some cool ideas to combine their concerns. And I'm going to wait and let them present that when they are back from spring break and come to our council meeting. But I just have to say what a pleasure it is to work with those inspiring young folks. I would also like to, speaking of inspiring young folks, to thank Ms. Diebold for coming forward and coming up with her idea for, you know, farm stands, free farm stands. I've seen this in different communities, and it's pretty amazing. And I'd like to suggest that you get in touch with some of the folks from Transition Cadillac, and we can proudly help you with that, so that you can make that connection, because those are the people that can help connect with all of the gardeners in the area, and help get some, some of these out there and working. Thanks.
Marcus?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. Just wanted to mention again that it is spring break week, so keep an eye out. There's hopefully going to be warmer weather this week, as forecasted, and there's going to be kids out and about riding around.
Bikes.
So please, keep an eye out for the children. And wanted also to mention that Cadillac Athletics, they had a phenomenal season, did end...
Oh, right.
Unfortunately, but I believe they made it awfully far down, down the road with that season. I know that Cadillac Pep Band Group also traveled to the arena as well, which was, which was a nice addition, too. Heard it, heard it on the radio. Wasn't there personally, but heard about it on the radio. So those are my remarks this evening.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Filkins, I have another one, if I may.
Okay.
Okay. I forgot. But something that you said made me think about it. On April 18th, which is a Saturday, and it's before our next meeting, the Cadillac Senior Center is sponsoring an Earth Day Learn Day. And it's an event for people of all ages to learn more about how to take care of the earth. So there will be a lot of gardening classes and composting, beekeeping, things like that. MSU Extension is going to be doing quite a few classes, like pruning fruit trees and learning how to can safely. So...
Did you say that date again?
That's April 18th. And I'm not sure what time it starts, but I'm thinking like 9 o'clock, so there's different sessions throughout the day. It looks like a really good event. I'll try to...
It's going to be right at the seniors?
Yeah, yeah. And it's free of charge, except I think you have to bring some produce for the seniors. I'll get the information out somehow. I mean, I couldn't get it out to council. I'm not sure I can get it out to the public. I guess that's their job, but, yeah. It sounds like a really neat event. They got a lot of really good speakers, Home Depots helping with it quite a bit.
Okay, all right. I would just share that a week and a half ago, I had the opportunity, well, actually, all in the same week. First, Councilmember Spohman and Marcus and I were able to attend the National Conference, National Conference, the Capitol Conference down in Lansing. And I thought it was a great conference, very informative. There was a really great session on the new updates to FOIA, and how those are going to be managed, and who's going to be accountable, accountable for the expenses of those moving forward. So, so that was really great. And then, the other one that I went to was a presentation by the MDEQ group, EQ group, in regards to Governor Snyder's Sustainability Program. And in my, in my day job, we're working on this project for single-stream recycling. And I was really excited to be in the same room with all of the people from the MDEQ, who are on the cusp of awarding $600,000 in grants. And so, we're going to wait anxiously to hear how that goes. But Governor Snyder's initiative is to increase sustainability or recycling by 20% over a two-year period of time. And so, that's just something that I personally am very passionate about. So I'm hoping that somehow, we can tie that all into the good work that we do here at the city. And we've begun with our recycling program with Ms. Green. We got a lot of great FaceTime with our legislators, legislative people, Phil Potvin and Darwin Boer. And they put something new in the program this year, and that was a breakfast with the legislators. And they, they did a good job of getting around to all of their constituents. And we had some great conversation about things that they were working on. Additionally, when I got back from that, I had the opportunity to participate in the reverse job shadow over at the Cadillac Junior High. And they had a great group of people from the community, and I got to spend the morning with junior high students, three hours of junior high students. And I had a great time. And I think it's just a wonderful program. Ann Bush coordinates the program, and was working with a gentleman through Rex Air this year. And they bring people in from the community who talk about what they do for a living, and how they got into the position that they are doing for a living, and what kind of education is required, and talking about the resources that are available to the students, that it's not always all about going to college, but rather taking advantage of what we have right here in our community, and that's the Career Tech Center. So it was a, it was a very rewarding day. So I hope they keep that program up. So at this time, we need a motion to go into closed session. Are there any updates to that motion, Marcus?
Also to add, Todd Kiway, our HR.
Okay, all right. So that's the update, is to add, Todd? Okay.
I'll make a motion to adjourn to closed session to, one, consider an attorney-client privileged written legal opinion, and, two, to consult with the city attorney regarding trial or settlement strategy in connection with the city of Cadillac versus Michalite Corp., Wexford County Circuit Court case number 14-25602-CH, for the reason that an open meeting would have a detrimental financial effect on the litigation or settlement position of the city. And also to request that Todd Kiway come into closed session with us. For which one of those?
Number one.
The first one?
The first one?
Do we have support?
Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Malama? Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Yes. Motion to return to open session?
Support.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes.
Okay, and then we were...
It'd be appropriate this time for council to consider a motion, accepting the city attorney's opinion as discussed in the closed session.
I'll make that motion.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Spohman?
Yes.
Stevens?
Malama?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes.
Motion carries. With that, we'll adjourn the meeting.